Carrie, was there a lady sitting up there? The one that started to come in? Lisa, would you mind inviting anyone out? Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this session of Quispamcis Town Council on September 3, 2024. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. Deputy Mayor, did you have a question?
No.
No, okay. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. May I have the treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection? Councilor Thompson, please.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamcis exists on the traditional territory of the Wallistue, Malacite, and Mekmek people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasmaquadi tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. I have a few remarks this evening. I'd like to begin my remarks by welcoming a new face seated directly to my left at our council horseshoe. Ian Watson is the new Chief Administrative Officer for the town of Quispamcis. He is in the second week here with the town after a lengthy career in healthcare leadership, including as Assistant Deputy Minister before that. Ian had a very successful career in paramedic medicine. Congratulations, Ian, and welcome to the team. We look forward to working with you. Some Olympic hardware is coming back to Quispamcis. Congratulations to paracyclists and Quispamcis native Alex Hayward, who captured a bronze medal in the 3,000-meter individual pursuit at the 2024 Paralympic Games in Paris this week. It was the first Paralympic medal for a New Brunswick-er in Paris and the first ever New Brunswick paracycling medal at the Paralympics. Great job, Alex. Still with the Olympics, we had the pleasure of hosting Quispamcis native Craig Thorn and his parents at Town Hall after he returned from Paris. Craig represented our region and country proudly in the 110-meter hurdles at the Olympic Games and is now heading back to school at the University of Guelph. Congratulations, Craig. We have some important work coming up on some of our recreational amenities, and we need your help to guide our plans. This Thursday, September 5, town staff and consultants will be holding a public consultation on improvements to the BMX Dirt Jump Park on Chelsea Drive. The consultation will run from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the park at 40 Chelsea Drive. Residents and park users of all ages are welcome to attend and provide input. On Thursday, September 12, the town will host a public consultation on the proposed expansion of Hammond River Park. This consultation will run from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Munens Cove Beach House. It will summarize the responses from the last public sessions earlier this year. And then on Wednesday, September 18, the town is hosting an open house from 4:00 to 7:00 at the McCluskey Brothers Conference Center at the Qplex to discuss the assessment of Ritchie Lake. The assessment is identifying the current condition and health of the lake, jurisdictional questions, permitted uses, and more. A short survey will be available this week on the Have Your Say page on our website. Please take a moment to complete it so your input can be included. Last week, Councilor Thompson and I were purposed to attend the opening of the new YMCA Childcare Center in partnership with Shanex. This facility will provide much-needed childcare spaces in our community. Quispamcis has had its own longstanding partnership with the YMCA through its childcare facility at the Qplex, and we look forward to this intergenerational joint effort that we are going to have through the Y and through Shanex. On Thursday, Councilors Bigger and Olson joined me at the badge ceremony for Mary Henderson, the new Deputy Chief of the Kennebecase's Regional Police Force. Deputy Chief Henderson has been a longtime resident of the Kennebecase's Valley and lives in Quispamcis. Congratulations to our new Deputy Chief on a position she has earned through more than two decades of service with our police force. I also joined Deputy Mayor Schreier at the opening of the Sophia Recovery Satellite Center on Millennium Drive last week. It was very humbling to have musician Alan Doyle on hand to present a $50,000 donation to the center from his own Dollar-A-Day Foundation. Thank you to Julie Atkinson and so many others for bringing this vital service to Quispamcis and the Kennebecase's Valley. As we wrap up, I want to thank our wonderful summer students, student employees at the town. We had more than 20 students work alongside our staff this summer, doing very important work in our community. The students have left us now, and the town is back to its regular daily workforce. Good luck to all of you as you resume your studies. And finally, we are now past Labor Day weekend. Our region welcomed a new school year starting today. Whether it's your last, first day of school or your very first time in a classroom, I hope you have a safe and wonderful academic year. It's wonderful to see children of all ages heading to classes again. Drivers, please be mindful of students who are getting used to being back at school again, and remember to lower your speed in the posted limits in those zones. Thank you. And now, we will continue with this evening's agenda. I am looking for a disclosure of interests. Item number five, presentations. There are none. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. May I have a motion on the acceptance of the regular meeting minutes of August 20, 2024? Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Thompson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Item number eight, unfinished business. This evening, we're going to have our CAO Ian Watson with his introduction of the first 90 days. So, Mr. Watson, welcome to the podium. So you have five and a half, almost six days in. So take us through the next 84.
Your worship, to you and through you, to members of council. Thank you very much, both for the warm welcome I've received over the last five, now almost six, days of being your CAO, and for this opportunity to really begin our work together in earnest. It's been a very warm welcome for both staff and council. I'm deeply appreciative. I thought this evening, we just spent a few minutes on what this first 90 days looks like for me, an opportunity to explore a little bit the overarching intent, and then to dig a little deeper into the first 30 days in particular. So if you indulge me, take you on a little tour of what this 90 days looks like to me, I certainly invite conversation and discussion. So again, the overarching intent for the presentation tonight is to really provide a high-level overview of this first 90 days in the seat and to dive a little deeper into that first 30 days. Time's a ticking. If I'm five days in now, that leaves me 25 to meet my obligations to you for that first 30. More broadly, though, I hope that this work will help clarify and confirm the roles and responsibilities that we have of each other and that we put a little more firmness to our next steps with respect to the strategic plans of the organization. I know those have been of interest, and you've been patiently waiting, so I appreciate that patience and look forward to working with you on those matters. So a quick snapshot, beginning with this first 30 days, I think it's probably fair to say that I envision this first time being a lot of listening on my part. Yep, it's true that I've got 20-plus years in the healthcare background, so I'm familiar with working with senior executives. I'm now familiar with working with cabinet and senior government as well during my time at the Department of Health. But municipal government is new to me. So I am busy, I am sure, annoying senior staff already. They've been very patient with me, for sure. I've got lots more questions to come of them and of you as I learn this environment of municipal government. I really do appreciate that patience and generosity that both are offering. Lots of listening and learning to go. I'd like to return to this first 30 days in a few minutes, but to put it in context, I thought maybe a quick snapshot of what days 30 to 60 and what 60 to 90 looks like might be helpful to frame things up, and then we'll come back to that first 30 days in more detail. So days 30 to 60, after a lot of learning and listening, and again, we'll get into the details of what I envision that looking like, and it's certainly welcome for further conversation on it. But for days 30 to 60 and 60 to 90, won't go into the details there, but for sure, my intent would be to return to council after my first 30 days. I think you are owed a full report of what I've discovered through this period of listening and learning, where I think there's certain opportunities or maybe vulnerabilities that we collectively have an opportunity to address together. So I intend to come back early in October to meet with you and to share the findings of my first 30 days. Also, I envision the opportunity to establish a cadence for ongoing operational support. You're counting on me to make sure that the operations of the town of Quispamcis are operating smoothly so that you can lead. We can manage, you can lead. I want that to be easy for you, and as a result, I think the conversations I've already had, including a senior staff meeting that we held earlier today, very productive, and is starting to set the tone and cadence for those conversations to continue. So I think putting a bit more formality to that for operational support direction is required is on my agenda for that 30 to 60 window. And finally, on the 30 to 60 window, under the general theme of assessing and supporting, starting the link to recognize the work being done now and the degree to which the work is supporting your direction at the strategic level. So just starting to link the work that our folks have on the operational level to the strategy that you've set. In many instances, that may be work already well underway, but what we may not have done yet is to link formally the work that's being done operationally to the strategy. And if it doesn't link, then we have opportunity for conversation around adjusting the operational cadence and content so that it does clearly populate the strategy. Finally, on 30 to 60, is a bit of time to think about some important opportunities for staff to know that we're working with them. I sense already from my conversations with the senior staff and with frontline staff that I've had opportunity to meet already, and there's been many, that there is certainly a sense of pride and ownership. But I think there's also an opportunity for us to demonstrate some early wins, to show the partnership that exists between council and senior staff and frontline staff at both the strategic and operational level. So a couple early wins might be helpful in that regard. And finally, the timing is good with budget season upon us. A deliberate assessment of any additional support we need in the short term to deliver on what you expect of us is important to me as well. So that's 30 to 60, whirlwind tour. 60 to 90 is really our time to start executing. And I appreciate that time's tight here, but our opportunity to start the work of linking strategy and operations more formally and providing enhanced visibility of our shared work together and our progress together. So recognizing that reporting dashboard will be important for that to bring the visibility that you would expect, both for council and for the citizens of Quispamcis when appropriate. And certainly, lots of ongoing learning for me, too, in that 60 to 90-day window as I continue to deepen my understanding of local budget operation support and continued learning. So that's a high-level overview of that first 90, but I did want to dig a little deeper on the first 30, if that's okay. If you'll indulge me just for a few more minutes. And I think it's fair to say that this first 30 days is, for me, a period of documented discovery, my terminology, probably not scientific in any way. But the notion that having time with each of you is important to me. And by each of you, I mean each of you individually, as well as senior staff. So I would offer, too, that from my perspective, that needs to start soon if we're in this first 30-day window, as in this week. And that it's a little more than developing a professional relationship, although I certainly value that. I think there's an opportunity here for me to have targeted conversation with all of you to assess the expectations that you and that staff have of the CAO and how you see matters coming to you, how you see strategy versus operations being separated or not, how you see decisions being made, the latitude, the limitations you would want to impose on the CAO to make sure that we have clarity of roles and responsibilities. To me, that's foundational, and it may very well be obvious to all of you. And certainly, by reading a job description or a role description or a competition posting, I get a sense of that. But I suspect there may also be variability in what we offer each other in our responses to those questions and that discussion. So that would be our opportunity to just clarify and solidify the foundation upon which the staff and council relationship is built. So certainly, that's part of that documented discovery is that exploration of expectations we have of each other and to explore how strongly we're connected to the strategic plan and the direction that you've approved in specific areas of interest, because I'm sure that many of you have areas that you know fit within the strategic plan and might be one layer deeper to say, well, yes, at the senior strategic level, I appreciate the pillars that we've all adopted, but what about the next level down, the areas of interest that I'd be interested in making sure that we are reflecting in our commitments and that we have shared understanding about before we move too far forward? So that's also a part of the day, one to 30 times. Won't spend long on this slide, but all to say that I think it's important for us, if you're comfortable, for us to share this broadly with staff so that they know what we're up to and beyond, that this documented discovery happens with the mayor, with each of you, and with the executive team. And it's a validation and exploration as well with our union leadership and frontline staff through my discussions with them. They're probably a little less formal, but also I'm interested in making sure that we are missing the mark there and certainly that I'm learning as much as I can along the way. In terms of expected outcomes of this first 30 days, I would offer that my plan would be to return to council October 15 to review the priority areas within the strategic plan and then discuss and consider areas where the clarification of the roles, responsibilities, and limitations of the CAO are warranted, as well as validation of that piece of the strategic plan. And then finally, using the results of that discussion to guide the development of a performance management framework for the CAO, because that, again, is part of your reasonable expectations of me is to make sure that we have a common understanding of what you need delivered and that I am delivering that and that you have opportunity to evaluate that performance. So that's kind of the overall CAO snapshot, but that's not to say that there isn't an awful lot of operational stuff I want to go to. And I would offer that concurrent activity includes discussion with the executive team, not on the strategy and the pieces that we just spoke of, but on day-to-day operations, like where are the priority files that are of concern or of particular interest to senior staff over the next little while? Just to make sure that we have a clear handle on that and that I continue the learning journey here to make sure that I understand the organization deeply enough to be able to support it appropriately. So I envision briefings with the executive team members in addition to that documented discovery time on priority files with an early emphasis on three things: staff safety, business continuity, and critical infrastructure. And I offer that I am interested in that and those three topics because they arguably are key vulnerabilities or potential vulnerabilities that we want to avoid and I expect you would want us to mitigate on your behalf. So also, in this first 30, introductory meetings with the folks listed are there for your consideration, possibly more, welcome additions to the list with the goal of beginning a trusting and collaborative relationship with each of them while reinforcing what Quispamcis is known for already, and that's being a very collegial, cooperative, and progressive place to live and grow and play. So I look forward to those conversations very much as well as I work to represent you at the senior operational level. So finally, a thank you to you for your confidence that you have shown in me and for listening to me this evening. As I drone on about what is important to me, I hope that resonates with you and that you see importance in the work that I can offer to you. You have a special crew here in the executive team. There's no question about it and beyond. And I look forward to working with you and with them in the days and weeks to come very much. Overall, though, I leave you with three themes to consider, and I hope they resonate with you as much as they do with me. First off is a firm commitment to communicate. So communication is top of my list. That's communication in both directions as we help Quispamcis reach new heights, both operationally and strategically. The second is trust. Acknowledgement that we can and must be able to trust one another in the days, weeks, and months to come as we deepen our work together. And in fairness, with trust comes some degree of forgiveness when things occasionally don't go quite according to plan. But I won't indulge that one too often, I hope. And finally, courtesy and understanding that maintaining a courteous professional relationship is key. I need to be able to tell you things that you may not want to hear all the time. And as a council, you need to be able to agree to give me advice that may not be my favorite, but all in a way that respects our roles and responsibilities and protects the relationship for the next discussion, for the next day, for the next week, for the next transaction that's important to us collectively. So I appreciate this is pretty high-level. I hope it's enough to twig your interest in my next 30, 60, and 90 days. I thank you again for your time. Certainly, open any comments or questions you may have, and otherwise, a recommendation for a motion to accept and file is presented at your discretion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson, and certainly, communication and trust and courtesy are something that are paramount in any organization. And, you know, as we move forward, we are anxious to see that we continue doing the good things that Quispamcis has always been known for. So thank you for taking the helm on this and taking the lead. I'm going to go to Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. I just have one little addition to your... You have your introductory meetings, and I would just like to add to that U-M-N-B.
Thank you.
Union of Municipalities of New Brunswick. That would be a good meeting with those folks.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. So we need a motion to accept the Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I would move that we accept Mr. Watson's briefing note, and we await October 15. He will bring back his first 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier and seconded by Councilor Bigger. On the question. On the question, Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Watson, for a great introductory kind of blurb. You moved pretty quickly through that, something I'm not known for with reports and presentations, so I covet you your skill at that. I just wanted to say it's exciting to see the fulfillment of the work that we did, the search committee, of course, buoyed by all the council. And I am particularly appreciative of, you know, just in the 30 to 60 to 90-day little overview, you seem to have a great handle on the importance of linking up operations and strategy. And so I know that that's something that has been discussed greatly around the horseshoe. And of course, it was discussed in your session with us in the search committee. And I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I believe that your history of, you know, taking on team building and personnel infrastructure to the end of moving people towards a common goal, a strategy. I think that was well outlined in the time we spent together during the search committee days in that incredibly hot room at the Hilton that we were in. Remember that, the AC didn't work. But nevertheless, welcome, and I appreciate your insights. And there's a lot of common ground here from what you had given us in that meeting, but looking forward to seeing that come together. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councilor Bigger on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Item one is the council discussion on the 2025 Strategic Plan Budget Priorities.
Strategic Plan.
Council asked to have the strategic plan in the discussion. So I think at one point, we were asked to arrive at three issues or concerns that we would like to see moved forward. If anyone would like to address what they've read in their package regarding the executive summary. Absolutely. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to members of council. Certainly, an opportunity here may arise by virtue of the conversations we're about to have one-on-one. Certainly, welcome submissions, as previously discussed and agreed to. That would be welcome, for sure. Might be an interesting foundation for me if submissions are of interest and it's timely for you to do so. If not, though, certainly welcome the opportunity to explore in our one-on-one conversations because the output of that would be an assembly of those opinions and priorities that I'm prepared to return to council with in October. So at your discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Councilor Donovan, please.
Thank you. So there's lots of things, but I mean, I can only pick a couple. Something that I think is important to me that I really would like us to maybe take into consideration. When we were doing the strategic plan, at one point, it was decided that, you know, we're going to make Quispamcis a destination, make the Qplex a destination. And we had sport tourism there at one point, and then we transitioned to more of just the word destination so that that could encompass a variety of things. The, you know, over the past couple of months, I'm sure we've all seen various events happening, you know, at the Area 506. You know, you have the Boxcar Festival, the Area 506 Festival, and then just this past weekend, we had the KV Blues Festival or whatever it was called. And I would like to personally push, and I mean, I would even offer myself up to help the Community Services Department. I would really like to see the Qplex or the Qplex parking lots or some part of that facility used more for community events, such as the Area 506. Obviously, they're not moving out here, but I'm sure we could create something of our own or at least maybe explore that idea. I'm not sure if it's been explored yet. But again, I could certainly help. I've got lots of contacts, and I would really... I've got lots of contacts and I would really, I just really would like to see something more community-oriented. I know we do a lot of hockey and things like that, and it's very much appreciated. It brings a lot of positive and solid things to our community, but I know there's not everybody's interested in hockey, and it just would be nice to get more concert, community event-type items. Second, obviously, is for me at least, is roads. I, my main priority for the budget season this year is roads. You know, we put a lot of money this season into roads because we didn't pave in the previous season, and I would like to see it remain at that level, if not increased more. I've heard so many people over the last couple of weeks tell me that we're doing a fantastic job with the roads, and it's, I know Gary and his team work very hard, but it's not, roads are a very contentious issue, so it's usually I'm hearing comments of why are you not paving more roads rather than, oh, you're doing a really good job with the roads. So that's something that I think we should definitely increase, and then obviously water is a really big thing as well, and I mean, I would just sound like a broken record talking about water, but I'll just leave it at that for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Deputy Mayor's Cryer, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. There is a lot in our strategic plan, and of course, we have to look at prioritizing items based on their urgency and the importance for the community. So as I went through that, I kept that in my mind, what is it, what is it? And I kept on coming back to a couple of two, two items in particular. One was water because I believe that when you're totally dependent on groundwater, that the municipality may be at risk. If something should happen with groundwater, we need to have some type of backup, and within that, not only the risk of pollutants within our water system, but you know, we have growth, more growth means more dependency on the groundwater, more people using it, you know, I'm not sure how quickly the aquifier is actually recharging, so I'm really concerned about the growth in the area and how we're going to protect our water, and I know we are moving forward with that, but if I have to pick, I want to sort of zero in on the water, and of course, with water comes economic opportunities as well, depending on where we put it, and so I think that's vitally important that we have, we don't want all our eggs in one basket just with the groundwater. And the second one is, of course, wastewater management. I think, again, pollutants going into our river system or our lake system like Ritchie Lake, or not saying that they are, I'm just saying, these are important issues when we look at, when I look at the over, the urgency in my mind is extreme for water and for protecting the environment. We know that the climate issues, we can't keep up with them, they're happening so quickly and so dramatically with floods and forest fires, and so I just want, I find that to protect our community, these are two vital, so those are the ones I'm sort of zooming in on, or I would like to see us drill down on, and again, everything is important, but if you have to concentrate on a couple, that's where I would be going in my mind in going forward with the strategic plan. That's not saying not supporting issues that we're already working on, like active transportation that we're already working on or being developed into plans, but when it comes to the dollars and cents, I think that we've got to be much more focused. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor's Cryer, and it's nice to see that there's consideration for water along the Hampton Road because, as we know, that will also increase the opportunities of new construction and perhaps higher-density buildings along there. So next in queue, Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think you had yours on first. No, that's okay.
It was you.
Ah, perfect. And my microphone works today. So mine, Mr. Watson, what you're gonna hear from me, I will say the same outside as I will say when we meet in private. For me, one of my biggest concerns is fiscal restraint. So in the last two years, we've raised our budget by over twenty percent, so that's our budget. So to put up our budget, last year, we also kept our tax rate the same, which I know everybody talks tax rate and that's what hits the media, but that tax rate staying the same gave every taxpayer in Quiz Pampas a ten percent increase, ten percent. Inflation was three or four, but ten percent. We have fights, fights is not the right word, we have major discussions on whether sewer should go up three or four percent. We have major discussions whether ball fields should go up two to four percent, yet when we talk about tax rate, we go, great, we have a low tax rate, but why not per tax base? When you look at us versus Riverview, I haven't seen things for a few years, we actually pay more per household. So there's a big, I know we need to have money, I know we got to grow, but to me, we also have, if you look at our last housing, we're up three hundred percent versus the last ten years, we've got houses coming in which brings in more tax dollars. I do know that it takes more sewer lines, but some of them that are being built now already have sewer and water that was built there years ago waiting for them. We tend to spend a lot of money on studies, so to me, for next year is we do a study if we need it, not for something that's going to happen along, anyway, different things, but to me, I'll be looking at, you know, what is really needed, because also I look ahead when I look at all of our long-term and short-term debts, and know we'll have the discussion on whether it should be in this budget or that budget, but to me, whether it's savings account, checking account, or TFSA, it's our money. We're going to be saving about a million dollars a year just on interest and principal payments, nine hundred seventy-four thousand, I think is the exact, that runs out in 2026. So from then on, we're going to have extra money because the Qplex, fantastic facility and everything else, but you look at the operating deficit, what we're paying for and everything else, it's close to, it's over two million a year on a thirty-two million dollar budget. So we do need more roads, and I'm okay with that, but it's also fiscal constraint. You know, to keep our tax rate the same, last year, we, at the last meeting, raised it another two and a half cents to keep it the same and puts almost six hundred fifty thousand into surplus. So the taxpayers are paying a lot of money, they get a lot of pressure right now on what they're paying, so I'll be looking at the percentage increase, not the tax rate, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to all of my fellow counselors for some very good input. I appreciate Counselor Miller's important reminder about financial restraint, and I guess I'll mirror a little bit of perhaps what the deputy mayor had offered up. In the strategic plan, we've been waiting a while to have kind of a discussion around how to, you know, how to, I guess, sort of filter budget and operational priorities through this strategy that we spent a lot of time and a lot of money on developing, and creating those linkages is, you know, vitally important, and it is something that we've been waiting a long time to kind of flesh out. And so it's no accident that our new C A O is here and we're looking at, just as he's talking about creating that linkage between operational mandates and priorities and strategy, that's kind of what we're looking at as well. And I'm encouraged, I think, somewhat by some of what I read within the strategic plan, even before we perhaps got the, quite the burning in the bosom that we currently seem to have regarding some of these important infrastructure upgrades such as water and its usefulness toward expanding our housing opportunities for new residents and so on. But I noticed that on page, I guess it's page three of the strategic plan, there's a noted list of four strategic themes being infrastructure management, commitment to community, economic development, and capacity building. And I feel as though those four strategic themes speak very well to the operational kind of mandates before us. As the deputy mayor points out, and as others have said in the past, water infrastructure is a vital component to, I think, the evolution of our town, so I would make that a high priority. I think that the watchword, as Counselor Miller points out of sort of fiscal restraint and being very sober-minded about that, is really important, but I'm also encouraged about the use of strategy. We have a strategy. We have applied or are applying in the second round of housing accelerator funds from the federal government to assist us. Our Director of Engineering and Works has a report tonight on a provincial program that allows us to partner over the next many years around Hampton Road, water expansion and the entire streetscape there. And so we aren't just picking things out of the air or reading the headlines in the news and saying we think we should do that. I believe we have, even perhaps before we knew exactly how it would feather together, we have developed a strategy that is kind of partnering up well with the operational kind of responsibilities that are before us. I think that one begets the next begets the next, to use Old Testament language, you know. We want to expand on housing opportunities because we've had put before us the deficits that we're facing, especially, and it's six degrees of separation, it spreads out wider and wider as time goes by. We've had that put before us by Dillon Consulting, by Envision, and we want to address that. Well, water infrastructure is one of the key things, as we all know, I'm preaching to the choir here, about expanding that. And so, again, that's a commitment to community, we want to be able, and capacity building, we want to be able to expand the capacity of housing here, and we want to commit to the community in terms of people who are seeking to downsize and perhaps make full-family, single-family detached housing stock available to young families, even as people downsize from those family homes they've been in for thirty years, the mortgage has been done for fifteen years, whatever, and they're looking to downsize into more of a condo-style kind of life. We want to meet that demand, and newcomers are coming to town, and this is stuff we've all discussed. I don't mean to suggest I'm bringing up anything new, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to connect what we've been talking about lately with what I see in the strategic plan, and I'm just saying I'm encouraged by how I see the linkage, you know? Economic development, the deputy mayor pointed that out as well, and of course, commercial development is reliant upon expanded municipal water service just as much as mid-rise multi-unit housing would be. And I believe that we have more and more sort of an independent kind of community here, where we have lots of people who are working remotely, we have lots of early retired or retired folks who are, you know, very active and very present in the community, not just hiding out in their houses or what have you. And so commercial development means jobs and employment in the area for people who are arriving here, and it means opportunities for people to improve their quality of life by virtue of the commercial offerings that we can encourage as a town, and we want to be, of course, champions of that, I'm sure. And so once again, I see that we have, we're on the right track, I believe, and there's a lot of work to do, but I just wanted to say that for me, the water infrastructure, housing stock, and commercial development are probably three, that's very sort of fifty-thousand-foot view stuff, I know, but I see that linking up quite effectively with the strategy that we sort of constructed with the help of our consultant a couple of years ago. So I'm really looking forward now to see how that, you know, gets fleshed out as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have a motion on that? Thank you for all the input. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was waiting, I was just, I was really enjoying listening to all the other counselors. I was the one that kind of put this on the agenda, so I really wanted to thank my fellow counselors. I think all the kind of hot topics are really, you know, well thought out, and I agree with them. You know, I guess earlier, hearing our new C A O talk about KPIs, results maps, dashboards, I'm very excited about all that because I think that for me is where I felt we were, you know, we had a really great strategic plan that we built, but I couldn't really figure out, you know, again, it's the operationalizing of it, and I think that by having that foundation that we can see, you know, kind of timelines and how all this flushes out will be really, really helpful in the future, so I'm really excited about that because I think it will help us. Deputy Mayor said it first in regards of prioritizing, and I think, when I look at all the things that we want to do, I think, you know, again, she said it best in terms of, I do think we need to prioritize some of the stuff that we are doing, and again, I think operationalizing it and putting it into work plans and having a particular roadmap with, you know, KPIs is really going to help with us accomplish that. So to me, I mean, water, roads, and again, the financial kind of restraint, as Counselor Miller had pointed out, I think is extremely critical. But again, it's all about, in my mind, you know, kind of looking forward to see what we, you know, where we need to go in the next ten, twenty years, but kind of seeing it here so that we can build towards it. And I think historically, sometimes, you know, we want to do everything, and I think, you know, we are going to have to take a hard look and make some hard decisions on where we're going to invest more of our efforts and more of our money in the short term to make sure that we have the infrastructure and all the things in place to move forward, you know, in the future. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I'd also like to say that, oh, Counselor Olson, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess everybody's heard my speeches on the, our tax rate, and I know Counselor Miller speaks so positively about everything, but we've got a tax rate of one twenty-seven-seven-seven. When you take a look at Riverview, one fifty-eight, St. Stephen, one fifty-something, I believe that we're being penalized provincially because of our tax rate, and I'd like to see some creative financing looked at that would rejig the provincial method of evaluating different municipalities. I know it was unconditional grant at one time, they've changed that a few times, but, you know, when there's, there's other communities similar size that have a tax rate of thirty, thirty cents more than ours. And I agree with Counselor Miller that we're paying a larger tax rate, larger for taxes on facilities and everything else. Why? Why are we? Is that a penalty for being, trying to be so frugal? And I know that, I know it's human nature that with a tax rate of one twenty-seven-seventy-seven, we still get complaints from residents, you know, that it's so high, but, you know, we are, we're looking at a lot of challenges in our community. When we look at paving roads, we do maybe a dozen, maybe fourteen roads a year, we've got two hundred to do, so we've got, I don't know, our Director of Engineering could explain that a little bit better, but, you know, we've got a rotation of about fifteen years or twenty years before these roads get visited again, you know, and that's just the way it is. So, I don't know, I agree with everything else that's been said, river, housing, development, but, you know, we've, we've, we've still got to deal with that tax rate and somehow get a better understanding from Fredrickton, just what that impact has on our, on our financing here in New Brunswick, in Quiz Pampas. I'll talk more with our C A O when I have my private meeting and it can really let loose.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, and to all of council, thank you for your input and for bringing these again to the forefront. These have been, these topics have all been discussed at one time or another. Staff worked very diligently with M D B to create a strategic plan. We had some hiccups along the way through no fault of our own, through no fault of staff, until we got to this point today where we have a new C A O at the table with us, but I'm very proud of the work that we've done, I'm very proud of the guidance that we've had from the acting C A O and from staff, because all the while, work was getting done operationally with the guidance of the strategic plan. So, you know, whether it's water, whether it's housing, whether it's economic development or commercial development, those are in the wings. Anything that we do as a town, it will cost money. So prioritizing is necessary, yes, operationalizing the strategic plan, but anything that we do is going to take money in order to get those operations into place, so we're really going to have to work hard and think hard and ensure that we allow staff to work on what you have identified or what you will identify when you have your one-on-one with our C A O to prioritize, so that staff has a very clear indication of where you want to be and where, how you want to move forward. So. Moving forwards. I don't believe there was a motion. I think it was information. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Item B is street upgrading, twenty-twenty-four tender, twenty-twenty-four T Q zero four-dash-zero-three, D T I component, Palmer Brook Road.
Thank you, your worship. I would move council amend tender number two zero-two-four T Q oh-four-dash-o-three, street upgrading twenty-twenty-four awarded to Galbraith Construction Limited to include the addition of the Palmer Brook Road from its intersection with Route One to its intersection with the Hampton Road. To the scope of work and the tender value, be initially increased by four hundred twenty-five-thousand dollars to account for this additional work. The cost of the work on this addition will come from the funding provided by D T I under the provincially designated highways agreement.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Counselor Luck, did you have a question on that? Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you to, uh, Mr. Lozier. I just was curious, and I think I got, um, some clarity from my fellow counselors here in terms of the rates, um, hand turn, so that's just going to be built off of Palmer Brook, just, you know, and I guess I have a bigger question, so I'll ask it and then maybe you can clarify. Um, because I know that you'd mentioned that we have, um, we were able to pave a little bit past Elliott. Um, and then somewhere in here, I read about us potentially going all the way to Hampton Road, maybe it's not here, maybe it's later on. Um, so I'm just wondering, because I, I see a lot of congestion in that area because, of course, more and more people are using that because they live across the arterial. Um, and then also, a lot of people coming in from Hampton, so it's a really kind of crazy, um, intersection. And I'm just wondering if you can just explain the slip road to Elliott? And then also, is there other going to, other safety things going to be kind of integrated when we do look at kind of closer to Hampton at the end Hampton Road and Palmer Brook? Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Um, if council recall, that when we first put out the tender, what we did is we just, uh, put out a, just a general paving call, so that would take us from the exit ramps off the Highway One, uh, coming on to the Palmer Brook, so at the end of, uh, the Renfort Pit, uh, in that area. And the funding that the D T I had granted to us, um, that, that four hundred twenty-five-thousand dollars, we included that in the estimates. So it enabled us to go to, just about to the Elliott Road. And when the tenders came in, we had a, a better than, uh, expected asphalt price, so now we can go to the Elliott and look at upgrades for that. So that's, that's, um, what we've asked our consultant and the contractors have been on. So basically, what we're going to be doing is now we have the capacity to go right to the Elliott Road. There'll be a right-hand lane that'll start maybe a hundred and fifty meters back of, say, the Jehovah Witness side when you come in there, so that people will be able to leave that, uh, on the right-hand side, slip lane off, go up to the Elliott without any, uh, people backing up behind them on the Palmer Brook Road. At the intersection, we'll be doing something along the lines of, uh, what you see at, um, the intersection down at Campbell Drive, Penningill Row, where there's, coming off of the, uh, Campbell Drive, you've got that right-hand lane that turns to go next to the Pizza Light, the Mexies, there's that, uh, concrete island. So we're looking at having something like that to actually delineate the area. We'll be shrinking the overall size of that intersection to be able to rationalize all the traffic into those three paths. Um, and then, uh, we anticipate, uh, stopping at that intersection. We looked at going past the Elliott Road in our most recent, um, review with the contractor, and what we determined was that, uh, once you get to the pumping station that's right there, it's right next to the Palmer Brook itself, and we don't have a water course alteration permit or certificate to do any work in that, that particular, uh, area. And it would delay anything that we did, so we've, we pulled back to say, okay, let's do what we can, right up to the intersection of the Elliott Road, use up the funds that the D T I has granted to us, and then from that point forward, a- a- as, as mentioned in the partner's, uh, letter to D T I, we've asked for in twenty-seven, continuing from that point to the, to the Hampton, Hammond River boundary. So, um, the, the change of limits was due to two things. One is the slip lane construction, our geotechnical investigation. It's a little bit more soupy, it's not a non-engineering term, but it's a little more mucky in there. That's even another non-engineering term. Um, and it requires us to build up that slip lane and let it settle for a little while before we can pave on it. And secondly, uh, under the Palmer Brook Road, there's an old box culvert, and we want to replace that as well. So, so in order for us to do the work, we've got to incur the cost of replacing that bo, that box culvert. So those two items will, uh, will have shortened the limits that we can go to, so we can't go past the, the Elliott Road intersection with this particular project. So that, that's the intent. Um, my engineering staff is, is going over that with the, uh, the contractors now. They, uh, anticipate, uh, after tonight's motion, they are going to, uh, mobilize on that site first and do their, um, their, they've got the milling machine that's going to come back and, and get that all ready, the limits that they need. They'll build out the slip lane, uh, compress it, let it sit for, uh, a little while, then we'll determine whether it's appropriate to, to pave over it, to finish it or not. Um, and then we'll put the, uh, the subsequent request in, in the twenty-seven capital budget for D T I. We wanted to put it in nineteen, in the twenty-twenty-five budget, the request of D T I, but in their, uh, letter that they've advised us, where they're granting us money in twenty-twenty-six, they are quite clear that they said they have no money for us in twenty-twenty-five. So all of a sudden, our, our, you know, normally it'd go to, oh, let's finish it next year. Now we're going to have to skip a year before we get any money from D T I, unless we want to undertake them ourselves. I don't think that's something that we really want to do with that cause. So, so that's the limits that we're looking at for this particular project, your worship. Does that give you?
Thank you, Mr. Lozier. Just a follow-up question is, um, has there ever been any consideration, I, again, not for this year, I know that it's just stopping at Elliott, but because we do have a few years? My worry is, is that, again, when I start to see all the subdivisions, like there's fifty lots off of, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on, has there ever been any consideration of even putting, um, a roundabout or something at that intersection? Because I guess I see it in the morning where people are trying to turn left heading to Hampton. Um, yeah, I'm surprised, maybe there is. I, I've never seen an accident there, but...
Oh, there's accidents.
It's, I was just going to say, it's a pretty scary intersection, and I just didn't know because of the, it's the speed, people are driving eighty to ninety, and then people are trying to cross over and turn left. I just didn't know if, looking ahead, knowing our town is growing, that is going to get more and more use, and before we start, like, developing and kind of, um, putting more pavement down, has there been any?
Yep. Yeah, we can, I can sort of expand on that. Uh, even to build off of what I mentioned earlier about the, the Palmer Brook being right there in that area, we had initially looked at, um, uh, taking the D T I money and designing both intersections, the Elliott Road intersection as well as the Hampton Road intersection. We met with our consultants, and what we found is, is that we would, we would use almost a third of their fund money just in design alone, to, to Counselor Miller's point about consultants. Um, we felt that, um, we're much better served at this stage, getting as much pavement on the road as we can, pardon the pun. Um, but it's, it's, gives us now, we can go right to the Elliott, get as much of that finished as we can. Uh, there is no space for a roundabout, we looked at that, at the, at the Hampton Road intersection because of the streams on both sides of that intersection. I think the best that we're going to be able to accommodate will likely be a, a holding lane into the Hampton Road, uh, and, and coming out back from Hampton. So, so rather than a, a full intersection with a roundabout, likely, uh, a middle turning lane, protected turning lane in, in the two, in the opposite directions so that the through traffic will be able to go. And in addition to that, what we would be examining is then, uh, because you've got, uh, more conflict points, a reduced speed zone, for example, um, signage, uh, lane markings, uh, visual, um, triggers to slow people down, um, those types of things because the space constraints that we have there don't allow us to do anything, uh, extravagant, you know, along those lines. So we, we did look at it, yes. We said, what could we spend now? Because it's somebody else's money. Um, we felt it was more appropriate to put as much pavement down with the money that we had. Um, and if council would recall, um, we, we put this at four twenty-five, but the D T I has identified some additional funds for us, so I would imagine we'll be using all of the money that D two sent our way to finish this road.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I guess two questions, one for Mr. Lozier, one for our treasurer. Mr. Lozier, you had mentioned, um, nothing till twenty-twenty-six, because I believe when we were ta, discussing for twenty-twenty-four budget, we were putting in a study to talk about what we can do to get water started in twenty-twenty-five. So does this mean we, there's no water till twenty-twenty-six for sure? Or, because I know I seen it also in, in your, uh...
In, in, and we didn't get the Housing Accelerator Fund, so we haven't, we haven't received, uh, funding from the R D C for the study, so we haven't done any initial, you know, I, I know it's the bane of your, your late, recent discussion, but we haven't done any consulting work to do a streetscape or an inventory or a planned detailed design for the Hampton Road. We really feel that's going to be appropriate. Um, uh, in discussions with, uh, Mr. Colburn, Mr. Kennedy, who have been dealing with R D C, they, it sounds like there's going to be coming some type of decision in the next little while. And what we've done in our capital program is identified twenty-five as the design year. And then D T I themselves have slated twenty-six as their contribution year, which means now we can leverage their two, two-point-one million dollars that they've got for this stretch that we've identified, and we can then leverage our own, hopefully, Housing Accelerator Fund and our own capital investment at that time to, to finish that road. So, so you're correct is that we won't see any water or road upgrades on the Hampton Road until twenty-twenty-six, based on the, uh, being, the ability to leverage D T I funds under partnerships for highways, municipal highway program.
Perfect. Thank you. And I guess the, the follow-up question's, it's a little bit, and this is to our, our treasurer. Um, last November, December, we were supposed to, we were hoping to get what our gas tax is, which is a C B, whatever it is now. Um, and I'm not saying, and we thought it'd be like nine ninety-five, we got five hun, four, five hundred in there now. Um, and I'm thinking we save it for the money we're going to need for the water and stuff like that. But I guess the, the question is, because we asked back in May, when we get the final answer, and there were still no final answers, we're going into our next budget season, and do we have any information from the provincial and federal to what, what, what we may, might get?
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Miller, uh, yes, we do. I don't have that right in front of me, um, but we have had a meeting, we have gone through, we actually have received in the bank in July, I believe, our first half of our twenty-twenty-four money. But the thing that we still need to be doing, um, and again, they've changed their process, is we still need to be completing our, um, commu, like, our capital investment plan, so our S I P plan for that, um, which will include what we had already budgeted for twenty-twenty-four. Um, so yeah, we have quite a bit of work to do to get that, but they have signed it off. We have some money, and now just the program is changing, and we have to do the heavy lifting now.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Skyer, please.
Um, thank you, your worship. Through you to, uh, Mr. Lozier. I'm, I'm just trying to, um, wrap my head around the fact that there's no funding for the year two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and so that would delay it to two thousand and twenty-six is, and it could be a, uh, question to our treasurer, or, um, Brendan, um, Krista, sorry, um, my mind. Uh, so anyway, my question is, sh- should we be looking at funding it for two thousand and twenty-five if we know the money's coming in two thousand and twenty-six? We've got, uh, do we have a, um, uh, sorry, you look like you want to cut me off.
I think, I think because the, and, and I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about funding the rest of the, of that, the Hampton Road out to the Hammond River. I think it would probably wise to let the D T I fund that rather than us going, because there's no guarantee that they're going to fund it. We've seen years where they've said, oh, we, we've got a hundred and thirteen communities, and we have to spend money, spread the money out, and they've, they've already committed to twenty-six. And so there's no guarantee that we'll see it in twenty-seven either. So they may say, well, I can't, we can't give you a million, two million dollars a year for the next five years, and we're not giving, we're giving, you know, all no, like, nothing for the next two years, you know? So that, so we've heard that, that discussion from representatives from the D T I on a regular basis. So I, I really would not encourage council to spend a significant amount of money on non-municipal streets. If, for example, we get to the Elliott Road and it's, we're twenty thousand dollars short to finish, listen, for twenty-two thousand dollars, we can finish paving the whole thing, we're done, and we can walk away, I will come back to council and say, listen, for twenty grand, it's a great investment, we'll get done. But I, I really wouldn't encourage council to consider doing anything for the province, um, without some level of guarantee on their contribution because, uh, we would not, we could be left high and dry big time. All it takes is a change of government or a change of personnel and, and staff that all of a sudden the policies change and you're stuck.
That's what, that's what I was looking for, to see if, I was looking for, to see if we have some type of commitment for two thousand and twenty-six.
Twenty-six, we do.
We do, but we do have a letter of commitment. So that money will come in two thousand and twenty-six.
Uh, it's, it's a letter of commitment from the current government and the current administration, whether that continues. I love to think it would, and I anticipate that it will. Um, it's, it's, it's a question of whether they change the format, because the part, the provincial highways, municipal partnership format, that this is be the second year later in the agenda that we've, we've been using, it's, it's new. And it's a change from the previous, Counselor Olson's a little longer than I, but thirty-seven years that I've been here, where the designated highway program, they didn't ask for municipal highways to contribute. It was, oh, if you can, but now, if you want to get something done, you have to contribute. And that's the, the, the tale of the tape when it comes to the provincial body. So I wouldn't go too far on a limb at this stage.
If you would, your worship, I just did have a follow-up question, and I know that we're talking about the intersections, but when we're talking about the, um, the Mackay and, um, or Highway one hundred, one, um, I, I can't help keep thinking about the, um, the residents that live in the, um, um, trailer, um, campus. And I'm wondering, huh, with reconstructing our roads, have we given any thought, or is the province of any, uh, a second access out of that park at this point?
They, they haven't, have any, any discussions at all. Um, they are, the controlled access that they have, they've got, um, in, in, my interpretation is, when you look at the, uh, road that's leading to those land lease communities in there, all three trailer parks, so each trailer park has two access points or more onto that side street. So from the provincial perspective, they feel that they're adequately serviced from an access point. They are still coming out to one intersection at the arterial, um, but it would be the same thing as if you look at some of our subdivisions, you know, they all go to, within, and there's a network within the subdivision, but it comes out to one street. So it's the same idea, it's the same concept. So, so I, I, we haven't heard anything from the province with respect to alternative access out there. If, uh, we see, uh, development on the French Village side, where they would take, uh, the end of that, uh, Colton Brook Road and go all the way out to the, uh, through the, through the, uh, wetland area over to the French Village, that would be your secondary source. Um, but that's, um, again, it's a lot of private development you would see in, in some of the, I think at the last council meeting for that Shady Grove Park that's there. So, um, the D, the D T I hasn't given any discussion to that. We've tried to engage them with respect to even pedestrian access, and they've sort of balked at the idea to date. I know the premier at one point was asking about, uh, pedestrian access out of the trailer park to come across the arterial over to the McEssow area. Uh, that hasn't gone anywhere, that's their road a hundred percent, and if they wanted to do it, they would do it on their own, but they don't need us to do that, but it's, it's never come anyplace. So, uh, I haven't heard anything in, in the last couple of years. It's, it's a request that we, that's the one that we do here most often. I'd like to be able to walk from here to McEssow, to the Food Land, things like that, to the Janet. Um, uh, so, sort of as an aside, when we do the Millennium Drive updates, we will be at least, uh, providing for accessibility so that if they do that, they can connect to our, uh, trail system that we're putting in there. But we haven't heard anything from the D T I from access points, pedestrian-wise or municipal, or ma, ma, motor vehicle-wise, either side.
Thank you, Mr. Lozier. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On the question, it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck. Please vote now. Item number nine is correspondence. Item number ten is bylaws. And on to new business. Item eleven-A, snowplow services, municipal facilities, staff recommendation. Deputy Mayor Skyer, please.
I would move that the town... I would move that the town award the snowplow services Town of Quispam sis municipal facilities, 2024 TQ 08-8, to the low bidder, Renforth Construction, for the bid price of $4,730 plus HST per snowstorm.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Skryer, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. There was only one bid on this. Oh, sorry. Point of clarification, I'm the Director of Community Services, so municipal properties fall under my purview, so hence the staff report. So, there is, there was only one bid submitted. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the question. Deputy Mayor Skryer.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Ms. Dana Pertin Dixon. What classifies, you know, snowstorm? Because it says, per snowstorm. So, I guess, you know, how, how does that determination happen? Or is it just snowfall?
We plan for between 14 and 16 events per season. So, I can't speak to a specific measurement of snow. It would be similar to what the Works Department would use for a criteria.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Am I correct in saying that if our trucks go out, those trucks, the, the, those trucks would also go out?
Well, not necessarily. Then we, sometimes we would have a different level of service provided at, for example, the Qplex, and we might get them to come twice, depending on the user groups, access to it, et cetera, which is one of the reasons why we have our own separate contract versus our municipal crew that do that work, because we do have facilities that need to be opened by a certain time. For example, the Qplex opens at 6:00, so people are at 5:30, and their priority are their streets. So, it's, they're very different services. So, we have 24 different sites that are contractor services, and they try to do that, obviously, we start working here at 7:30 in the morning, the Qplex at 7:30, parks and facilities start at 7:00. So, we, we have to meet all of those requirements for safety reasons, for access to our facilities, and bus stops, comic bus stops are within that as well. We might move some of the other sites, such as Hammond River Park, Wuchy Lake, the QR Trail, Matthews Cove, all of those assets would be a little further down the priority list, but the access to facilities, it would be the priority, and again, there's 24 of those. So, it's a very good price.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the clarity. Councilor Donovan, please.
Thank you. My question is more towards the, the tendering part of these, of your reports. And it just, maybe it's just my lack of not understanding, so I'm just curious if you could clarify. What is the process for when we tender things, like smaller items like this? Is it, you know, advertised at all? Is it placed on our, I mean, it's not really something, I guess, that everybody would be interested in, but is it placed on our Facebook page? Is it a certain section of our website? And the only reason I'm asking is because ironically enough, I have had a few businesses actually reach out to me and ask, you know, what the process was of getting some of these municipal contracts, like just what the, the process they would have to go through in order to apply. And I just, I, I guess I just never know what to tell them, because it just seems like it's, I mean, you put the tender out, and I just don't know how that works. So, if you could give me like a quick explanation, that might be helpful. Thank you.
Sorry. The whole procurement kind of falls underneath my umbrella. So, we have a procurement policy, so it does depend on different limits of what we have to do, but we do follow, and there are a lot, I'm not going to go through all of them. There are a lot of guidelines, regulations, rules, when we have to post, where we have to post, for how long we have to post. So, we do follow all of those procedures based on our procurement policy.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon, our town treasurer. Councilor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you to our Director of Community Services. I just wanted, I had a follow-up question, you had mentioned the QR Trail, and I know the last few years, I was really happy that we were paving it, and I think a lot of the residents were, and I'm just wondering if that now will be part of, like, that's included in this?
Sure is.
It is awesome. Thank you so much.
Pardon me?
No.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Skryer, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question, please vote. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I timed out.
Yep. Yes, she's. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item 11B, 2024 T0Q, TOQ 08-7, private lane plowing tender recommendations. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that council approve RFP 2024 TQ 08-7, snowplow services for Town of Quispam sis private lanes.
Thank you. Sorry? Go ahead.
Be awarded to the low bidder, add just lawn maintenance for the bid price of $1,000 plus HST per snowstorm under the terms of the RFP.
No, I can, thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Councilor Bigger. On the question. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Mr. Loge. Mr. Loge, can you tell, tell me what three lanes were added to the tender this year, and why they were added?
Sure thing, your worship. We added the Old Neck, Headley Lane, and Hovey. They were added because when we finished plowing, or finished resurfacing those particular streets, they were constructed at a narrow, narrower width than a full normal subdivision street. And in doing so, we cannot take a full-sized plow down these reconstructed streets without tearing off some of the shoulders that are there, the grass shoulders, or we aren't capable of turning in a particular area, because they come to a dead end, and we, we would be turning a, you know, five-ton truck in somebody's driveway and, and having to repair the damages. So, with the one ton, we can appropriately plow the street and turn and not create a hazard at the end of the road. So, it was really to provide a, an appropriate level of service for the size of the lane that we have there. And then to the second part of that is, we do not have in our fleet currently a one-ton vehicle capable of plowing that type of, of a lane. We found, we used to have it about 15 years ago. We found that they were high maintenance, very seasonally used, and that they would be parked for, for the majority of the year. And what we also found was that the, the, the fleet maintenance was extremely costly on them. So, we felt it was more appropriate to have it contracted out. And similar to the, the, the facilities, these call-outs are at the control of our Works Superintendent or the operator, or the op supervisor on call for that particular snow event. So, what you'll see is they'll be called out at the same time that our main plows are, or be called out for an additional plowing for salting and sanding purposes. So, they, they act as essentially a ad hoc arm of our fleet, the same way that we have the contractors with, with the Miller Group.
Sorry, your worship, I, I didn't hear all three. I heard Old Neck and Hovey.
Old Neck, Hovey, and Headley Lane.
And what?
Headley Lane.
Oh, Headley. Okay, thank you.
Buckley Lane.
No, Headley.
The new ones, there's new ones.
The additional three I wanted.
There, there's, there were some added this year, because they were streets in the last two years, your worship, that we actually resurfaced and reconstructed and brought to a narrower width.
So, how did we plow them before?
They were plowed with a loader that at, well, one of them wasn't plowed until the snowstorms were done, so the level of service was not the same. So, so the residents had asked if we could up that level of service, rather than waiting till after the storm event was done and coming in with a loader or a backhoe. We'd come in ourselves, you know, with our tack crews, now we can put it as part of the rotation.
Thank you. Councilor Bigger, please.
Thank you very much, your worship. Just through you to the Director of Engineering and Works. I, yeah, the price disparity is significant there, isn't it, between the second and third bid? And I just wanted to mention that I appreciate, I see that, you know, the, the diligence has been done as usual by our department here to kind of visit with them and determine the equipment and so on, is up to snuff. And then I see that there's a, a three-year term, but with a one-year kind of revisit, which I assume is probably just to make sure it's going well and, and under the circumstances. I was thinking, as the Deputy Mayor's question led to talk about fleet maintenance and so on, the depreciated value and maintenance value related to a one-ton truck. I don't know if you could, with, using the Director of Community Services thumbnail there of 14, you know, proposed incidents that might require plowing, I don't know if you could, if you could accommodate that, but that's a, it's kind of a good price compared to what it would cost to buy a truck and have it just depreciate over time.
The, the call-out frequencies are a little different for the free, for the facilities and the lanes. We, we anticipate probably about 60 call-outs for these contractors.
Oh, okay.
And so they have multiple vehicles available to them. And then we don't monopolize their time. So, some of the contractors are leveraging, they have their own clients. So, on their way to a particular client, they'll do our lane, as long as they meet and finish the standard, and within a timely fashion, that's what we look for. So, we don't say, okay, you have to do us first. If they say, listen, you'll be done within the first hour of the call-out, but on the way, I'm going to have two, two driveways to do, and you're the third one on the list. As long as we know, but this particular contractor, just to give you the sort of background, they've had the last contract, and they actually had a contract extension, because they did quite well for us. So, we're, that's why I'm confident in making that particular recommendation.
Yeah, I appreciate the information in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loge, thank you, Councilor Bigger. On the question, moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Councilor Bigger. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item 11C, DTI Provincial Municipal Highway Partnership Program, 2026-2029. There is a motion there. Councilor Bigger, please.
I move that the document entitled Town of Quispam sis four-year plan for the PMHP program 2026-2029 be adopted.
It's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item 11D, appointment of Assistant Town Clerk and Assistant Town Treasurer. Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that council designate Ian Watson, CAO, to be the Assistant Town Clerk and Assistant Town Treasurer.
It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Thompson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item 11E. The upcoming one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Item 11E, update of financial signing officers, policy 012 and associated resolutions, staff report from Town Treasurer. And as you can see, there are a number of them. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. I'd move council adopt the updated financial signing officer's policy number 012, policy as presented.
It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Councilor Thompson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number two.
Do you want me to continue?
Councilor Luck.
I move that, resolve that Mr. Aaron Kennedy be removed as an authorized signing officer on all Town of Quispam sis bank accounts, except the Town of Quispam sis Hockey Canada Events Bank Account.
It's been moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number three. Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I move that Ms. Susan DeVell be removed as author, as an authorized signing officer on all Town of Quispam sis bank accounts.
It's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number four. Councilor Luck.
I move the resolve that Ms., or Mrs. Kathy Snow be removed as an authorized signing officer on all Town of Quispam sis bank accounts.
It's been moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number five. Deputy Mayor Skryer.
Yes, be it resolved that Ms. Nancy Young be removed as an authorized signing officer on all Town of Quispam sis bank accounts.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Skryer, seconded by Councilor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number six. Councilor Luck.
Be it resolved that Ms. Lisa McGinnis be appointed as an authorized signing officer, jointly with other authorized signing officers, on all Town of Quispam sis bank accounts.
It's been moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Item number seven. Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Be it resolved that Mr. Ian Watson be appointed as an authorized signing officer, jointly with other authorized signing officers, on all Town of Quispam sis bank accounts.
I'd like to mention that item number six was, motion carried, seven zero. Item number seven, moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number 12, reports. I'll just point out that Emily Lenny, our, one of our 2024 Town Scholarship recipients, sent a thank you note and was extremely happy to have received the scholarship from the Town of Quispam sis. Item number 13, business arising from committee of the whole. There is none. Item number 14, adjournment. Moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Councilor Thompson. On the question. Please vote now. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Safe travels home, everybody, enjoy the rest of your week.